Welcome to the AMSA Board of Trustees Meeting for February. And it is February 25th at 6:00 PM or 6:04. Welcome. So, let me get my agenda over here by the screen. This meeting is recorded and is live streaming on the AMSA Facebook page. And next up, I need to appoint a timekeeper.
As always, to do it, but happy to defer as well.
Just will keep us on time tonight.
All right, there you go.
At the end of this meeting, there will be an executive session to discuss the purchase or lease of real estate, and we will not reconvene after executive session. Next up, we have recording attendance and guests. All the board members are present and a number of distinguished guests. And after that, we have public comment. Liz, do you have?
I do have one tonight for a public comment. I'm not sure if there's anyone else on. We can, I can take those names, or you can shoot me an email. But for right now, I know Jen Hunt would like to make a public comment. Jenny, you want?
Hello? Yep, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for having me, Liz.
No problem.
So Jen, can you introduce yourself briefly and state your topic? And you have the floor.
Sure. Thank you. My name is Jennifer Hunt. I have two sons currently at AMSA, Cameron, who's a senior, and Dylan, who's a freshman. I'm calling tonight, or calling in tonight, to talk to the committee regarding AMSA's opening, hopefully in April. And that's my main point of my call.
All right, you have the floor.
Okay, so I'm a little bit nervous to call in. As a few weeks ago, I spoke with Maura Webster, and she was so wonderful on the phone to talk about my concerns about the school not opening. And what I expressed to Maura was, you know, I'm not the type of person to scream and yell or do, like, cause controversy or make people upset. But I have, I've been moved to reach out to you all to express my concern about not opening. I'm advocating for my children, basically because this is becoming, I think, too much on our kids. I want to thank everybody, our administrators and teachers, for everything they've done by moving to our unbelievable curriculum online. It's been unbelievable to see. It is a vast undertaking, and it's been impressive. And I don't, I don't know anybody that can say that their kids have lacked because of the online learning in terms of their academic rigor. It's just been impressive. So I'm thankful for that. I'm thankful to the school counselors and the athletics teachers for helping our kids in all different other ways to maintain some sense of community. But at this point, almost a year from initial closure, I do have to speak up and ask that we try to do more to open. I have to apologize, too. I haven't been to a committee. I haven't participated, and that's in these committees before, and I'm not sure if this will be part of the discussion. But I really would like to see us open in April, and I would really like to see the action plans being currently taken to meet that goal. And I have to express my concern about the HVAC system. I'm actually tired of hearing about the HVAC system. I would really like us to move past from "we can't because of the HVAC system" to "we can and we will despite the HVAC system." I couldn't find any research anywhere that would say that a school couldn't open because of an HVAC system. I've read lots of recommendations and guidelines and all kinds of things, but I really didn't see any scientific evidence about the reason not to reopen from the HVAC. So, you know, and I understand we have space issues. That is a huge concern, but I feel that we can, again, try to work through those space issues, given our community and our size, and think creatively. I'm sorry, I'm, like, losing track of all my points, but I just, I just had to reach out. My freshman is just an, he was an active member of the AMSA community as a middle schooler, a leader in the community. He participates in sports. He's a great student. And when he looks at me in the morning and says, "I just don't know how much longer I can do this," I have, I just have to move to call and express my, you know, my concern that we're not opening, that we're not going to open in April, and what that means to our kids. And again, I want to thank everybody for what they've done, and thank all of you for your participation and help with AMSA. It's just an incredible group, and I'm really proud. But I feel like we can do more to get our kids back in school. I think that's all I have.
All right. Thank you very much for your feedback.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Oh, that's his hand up as well, Roger.
No, no, why are you clapping?
Oh, you're just clapping.
Thank you, Jen.
You're on mute, Liz.
Thanks, Jen. Yeah, sorry, I was just checking my AMSA email to make sure I didn't have any other requests. I'm not sure if there's anyone else online who wanted to make a public comment, but I don't have any emails with requests for public comment at this time.
Is there, so, as part of the agenda, is there a discussion topic from the public speak at this point? I believe that Ellen may be addressing some of the points in her big dinner, in her report.
Yeah, and I just thought it was probably worthwhile to point that out, just so that people do know that that will be addressed to some extent. And Ellen, I'm not going to, you know, not going to presume to know what you're going to say, but just some of it will be at least covered in your session tonight.
Yes, it definitely will, and I'll have photos of the preparations that have already taken place, and the in-school program we have going now as well.
So, I think, so at this point, we, I think we may, we may come and revisit this at the end, but I think we wait for the executive director report at this point. I think we are ready to move on to the voting section of our meeting, starting, the first is to approve the, review and approve the minutes from the January 7th board meeting.
Roger, before we move to that, I have a suggestion, and I don't know if there's a reason why we can't do it this way. Since there are, like, four different minutes, can we bundle that motion to include all four of them, or do we need to vote separately?
I believe it's best that we vote separately.
It's the way it comes in the program, but I think that two of these are just a five-minute meeting, and that's just going through it.
I was just going for efficiency, but let's do it. It's fine.
Well, I would say that we could bundle the two very short meetings together as one vote. So optimize a little bit.
Now, don't worry, don't confuse Sarah for one of the...
All right, so, any comments or questions on the Jan. 7th meeting? Hearing, hearing none. I'll accept a motion, looking for a motion to approve the minutes.
Move.
I second.
Second from Ben. Moved by Raul. Roll call vote.
Hmm?
That would be you. That would be you, Sarah. Sorry.
Okay, Ben? Jess?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
Maura?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Raul?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Sheila?
Yes.
Salmini?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. Next is the minutes from the January 13th special meeting. And I'll also bundle that with the minutes from the February 2nd special meeting, because both those minutes were very short. So any, any discussion on those two minutes? Hearing none. Motion to approve the two special meeting minutes.
So moved. Sheila?
Second.
I missed the second.
Liz.
Move.
Liz. Sarah?
Yep. Just put Liz through. Yep. Ben?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
Maura?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Raul?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Sheila?
Yes.
Salmini?
Yes.
Motion's passed unanimously. That approves the January 13th and February 2nd minutes. Finally, final vote is to approve the January 23rd minutes. Any discussion? No discussion? Take a look for a motion to approve the January 23rd minutes.
So moved. Liz.
Motion by Liz.
Second.
Second from Maura. Sarah?
Yep. Hold on.
Sorry, we're being too efficient.
Yeah, okay. Ben?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
Maura?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Raul?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Sheila?
Yes.
Salmini?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion passes unanimously. With that, we are into the report section of the meeting. I'd like to turn the meeting over to Ellen to provide the executive director report.
All righty. Well, thank you. While I'm getting ready to share this, I hope Jen is still here so she can, she can hear this. Jen, if you're still here, I do have an opportunity to work with Cam, and you have a very special son there. And I know you know that. But he's a really special kid. I appreciate you being here, and I agree with you. We need to get back to school. We need to do better. Let's see. What are you guys seeing right now?
We can see your first slide. Yeah, Board of Trustees ED report.
Okay. All right, that's great, because I got a new, I had some screen problems, and I got a new screen, just set it up today, and it just did something different for me than my, than my last one did. So I'm glad that came out. All righty, so here we are. It's February 25th. We made it through January and most of February. Hard to believe how fast time goes by. This is an overview of my report tonight. Going to talk just for a minute about the communications that Commissioner O'Reilly put out earlier this week, and what that might mean down the line for AMSA. Going to look at the lottery. We had the lottery yesterday, I believe, or Tuesday, excuse me, it was Tuesday. And we have a new program partnership that we're working with Assumption, especially Assumption University, that I want to just tell you about really quickly. Giving you also a mid-year curriculum update, just letting you know where the department chairs feel that we are at mid-year. And then we're going to talk a little bit about the Term Four program that we're putting together, and that's in the middle of development, actually, right now, and describe that a little bit to you. And then a little bit of razzle-dazzle, a couple items, and then talking about some upcoming events that we have. So actually, before we start this, I didn't add in a slide on the information we got from Commissioner O'Reilly, mainly because he, he spoke to us. You might have seen a video of him speaking on TV or on social media, because the plan that he's proposing at this point is still in the proposal stage. He has a number of proposals that will be going forward to his board, the Board of Education, Massachusetts, around getting students back to school, and his focus at this point is on elementary school students, so K to 5. He is doing what he's calling a phased-in approach, or he's proposing a phased-in approach, which is K to 5 right now. They'll see how that's going. They may then give us a date down the line for middle school. He didn't really foresee high school necessarily coming back, but there was a possibility at the, at the very end of the year. We're not working with that many weeks left here, so, but once again, I will have more information about that in the March meeting. We would be impacted if his plan passes. We would be potentially impacted, probably closer to May, in the middle school. But as you're going to see down, a few bullets further down, we have a Term Four program that we actually had created and had made a decision on about a half hour before, before the commissioner came out with, with his, his policy or his proposal. And we're going to talk about that a little bit. I think it may fit into what Commissioner O'Reilly is asking for, and we will be starting that sooner in the middle school, grade six through nine. We'll talk about that in a minute. So that's where we are. I will have more information, I think. His, his plan's going to be voted on. He said he wasn't sure of the date, but it would be within the next two weeks. I'll have more information then. We had our lottery this week. This was on Tuesday. And for those of you who have been around for a while, you know that the lottery can be, you know, there's some years that we're at near cap, and we can't take Marlboro students. Some years we can. We were hopeful this year, because our Marlboro numbers were down after a number of Marlboro students graduated, and we were lucky enough that that was the case. We got a call Friday before vacation telling us that we could bring Marlboro students in, so we're very excited about that. Right at this point, we've got 132 sixth graders that we have offered seats to. Of those 132 students, 42 are siblings, 10 are from Clinton, 26 from Hudson, Maynor, 10, and as you can see, 44 from Marlboro. And then under there, you can see the numbers of how many we have total wait lists still in sixth grade of 168 students who have not been offered seats yet. In seventh grade, we actually pulled in 10 students. Yeah, I spoke to Linda today. We're actually going to be pulling in four more. That brings us up to 140, and that's kind of the goal, is to have 140, and stabilize that across the middle school. Actually, it would be, the goal is to be at 140 from sixth grade through ninth grade. It's something that, it's taken us years to achieve, that we won't have bubble classes anymore, and this, this is the beginning, really, of stabilizing that 140. So it's a priority for us to get, right now, we've got 136 seats that are filled in seventh grade for next year, and we want to bring in four more. That will bring us up to 140. And so you can see the breakdown there on that. Just a quick shout-out to Partnership. This was introduced to me by Kate Driver in the School Counseling Department. We have entered into a MOU with Assumption University, and we will be bringing in some of their teachers and counselors as, as part of their internship hours. And so many teachers and counselors love to do this work. I used to love having a intern into, a mentor into teach. And we had actually a student from Pittsburgh State in the Counseling Department last year. We actually hired her mid-year this year, when we lost a teacher to a maternity leave. And we, one of the supervisors that we hired for our in-school program actually is from this program. So it's the first bit of collaboration. He's in a master's program, and you'll see a little bit more about the folks that we hired for our current supervised in-school program. So this is part of that. And they are going to offer our teachers free professional development, and they're also going to offer our teachers a third of the reduction in tuition costs for any master's levels classes they take. So I think that's, that's fun. This is brand-new, and we're excited about that relationship, and I think it's going to be a great benefit for our teachers. A lot of them are taking advantage of the tuition that the school has been offering them. So now we're going to look quickly at our mid-year curriculum update. I spoke to the academic department chairs, tried to get an idea of where they are. This is part of my ED goals for the year, to present this to mid-year, and then again at the end of the year. Math, the math department got together over the summer, and they adjusted their curriculum to about 80%. The goal was for them to get to through 80% of their typical curriculum this year, and that also meant going back to the spring, pulling the topics from the spring that, that they didn't get to, and bringing those forward, plus adding 80% of the, of the current year. And for the most part, the teachers, some of them are on target. For the most part, I would say they're about one to three weeks behind on that, on that 80%, but Luba felt pretty good that they would be able to complete their goal by the end of the year. If not, they'll take a topic or two, and they'll, they'll push it for another year. I've mentioned several times, this is going to take us a couple years to recover from. And so this is part of the work that we're doing now to, so that the department chairs and the teachers can map this out as we go forward. AP classes are on track for math. When we look at the science, 55% of the science classes are on track. That's across all grades. 29% of them are about one to three weeks behind, and 16% of the classes are actually ahead of where they would be. Some of that is in computer science, and I think, you know, it really lends itself to this online learning. And, and so some of them are ahead, and their AP classes are on track. And then English, English is a little bit different. It's a little bit more difficult to, to measure. And so, you know, Marty did a great job putting together some information for me, because with, with English, it's about skills. It's developing skills year to year. And she said that they really feel as though they're, they're about two to three weeks behind. There's definitely major concerns around skills development, and I listed there the different things that they are concerned about in the upper school and the lower school. And, and they're going to continue to work on those. The, with, with English, it seemed, instead of doing some of the longer pieces that they normally would do, online learning is, is really lending itself more to shorter pieces more often. And so there is some concern about, you know, that, as it says here, that that longer form writing and getting the students ready to do that. I think the lower school students, I'm not sure which grade she mentioned, were, were really doing their very first long writing assignment right now. History, the whole history department got together over the summer as well, and they adjusted the timeline on their curriculum, and they adjusted, and once again, 80% they felt they would be able to cover, and it looks like they're, they're right on track as well. World language, a little further behind. They're about four to six weeks, especially in lower school, Latin is a place that Sarah is particularly concerned about. And I think, once again, it's just, it's a difficult topic to, to teach online. So that's where we are, and they're going to continue to monitor that as, as we move through the year, for sure. Okay, so here's what we're looking at for fourth term. And, you know, just to speak to Jen's point, this is extremely challenging to balance, and to try to balance things from, from all sides. We're very, very concerned about the kids staying home and, and, and the isolation, and, and so, and yet, you know, vaccines aren't out, and we do have building issues, and, and so we're trying to look at things from, from all sides. There's, there's lots of challenges, for sure. We currently have a, an in-school remote supervision program. It has a little less than 30 students in it right now. And what we did, and I talked to you about this last month, we took the high-need students, and we, we invited them in. Some have said yes, some have said no. We've invited them in, and it's going really well. We have three rooms set up in the White Building. I'll show you some pictures of that further in. We've learned a lot from it. We learned that the older kids don't love it. They just assume be home and doing their work from home. We have some that do. But it's working really well, especially for sixth grade to ninth grade. So our plan for April is to expand that program, that we would expand the optional program and offer it out to any student in grades six through nine. We have already contacted the busing companies. They're willing to work with us and get the busing going, get the lunch program. The lunch program is running right now, actually, for the students that are in school, but to obviously expand that. Our teachers would continue to teach remotely. Students could opt into the program, and they're supervised by an adult when they get to school. And once again, I'm going to show you some pictures so you can see how that all plays out. We're also, we understand that our seniors, our hearts are particularly, you know, breaking for them and for the situation that they're living through. And so Brianna's been working with the, the student government, and they've been having, they have a whole committee of folks right now that are working on senior activities and ideas, and we're talking about doing extra activities, perhaps even something like opening up the campus for picnics and, and things like that, that they'd be supervised on Monday afternoons. And they could come in, be outside, you know, as soon as the, the weather gets decent, they're willing to be out there in the snow, I'm sure, and bring their, bring their lunches and enjoy some social time out there, along with other activities as well. But we want to make something, an opportunity for them socially. All right, so here's some pictures of our current in-school supervised program. We have hired three, three young people to, to go into these classrooms. There's about 10 students in each one of those. You'll see the spacing of the tables, and, and they're basically supervising them. They're reminding them to stay off their phone, to stay, you know, engaged in the learning. They're watching, they're monitoring what they're looking at on a land, a land school program. And so I wanted, so the, the program is happening right down the White Building, which has our largest rooms. And you can see, when you go into the door of the White Building, this is Margie's desk, which you've been, hopefully you can see that there's, we've got the plexiglass, it's all up at Margie's desk. All the, all the stickers are on the, on the floor for social distancing. This here, this is actually Carolyn Russo's room. It is also in the White Building. And you can see that those desks are, are, this isn't the whole, the whole room, but they are all about six feet apart. And these are two separate pictures. So the one on the, on my left, this is looking into one of the classrooms. These are some of our students that, that are in there. You can see how they've got headphones on. They're...
That's my room.
Yes, that is your room, Ms. Bowen. Yes, it is. And they are, you know, they're doing their work, and it's, it's great, it's great to see. And the picture on the right, you can see the plexiglass dividers that we have for lunch. That's where lunch is being served, and the kids can sit there. Obviously, they have their masks on when they're in the classrooms, but obviously, when they're eating, they don't. And one of the, the ways that we can help protect the kids is to put up these plexiglass pieces, and they each have like their own little clear cubby. And this, we set up this little cafeteria area in the White Building, so the kids don't have to go over to the other building. They're all kind of kept right here. But here's a group of them. This is lunch today, actually. And there's six of the, the boys there. You can see that they're, you know, they're, they're sitting together, right? I'm sure that they're talking. Some of them have masks on. They probably had finished eating, some of them didn't. And then you have another one there, and he's actually, he's actually working. And there's several other tables. These are just a couple off to the right, off to the left, excuse me. Okay, and I also wanted to share some, some photos of precautions that are already in place, and things that actually have been in place for quite some time. But I honestly, I should have thought to show them to everyone before, but I hadn't. So here you go. So each one of the entrances in all the buildings have one of these, blue and red, wear a face mask and maintain social distancing reminders as people enter the building. And then, then there's reminders throughout the building. That's Kathy McLaughlin there, just reminding everyone to, to make sure that they have their masks on. Um, just reminding everyone to, to make sure that they have their masks on. We've added, I can't tell you how many hand sanitizers. There's one in every single classroom. They're in the hall. They're in the offices. They're. Everywhere you can be. Um, Eric has bought gallons and gallons and gallons of, of hand sanitizer. In fact, that was all purchased last spring. The picture here on the right, this is Kathy McLaughlin's office. You can also see that she's got plexiglass um there as well. She's got it decorated for St. Patrick's Day, but um that's, that's Kathy's uh protection. Um, I didn't get a picture of Sandy's, but Sandy's has, she has almost a wall of plexiglass um around her. Eric has done a great job making sure that um those people who are front-facing, the public um are protected. Um, this is just a shot down. This is the, the, the front door there to the, in the lower school. I just wanted you to see that. You know, we've got the, the stickers there on the, on the carpets and we're ready to um, to deal with any kind of spacing. And, and that, that's a line waiting for Kathy. And then we also purchased these um, these dividers here. Th- this is like when you go to the movies, you know, and they, you, you pull out. And these are gonna go down the center of the hall so that the kids aren't mixing and crossing, uh, and that they stay in line when they're walking. And um, and, and for any other spaces that we need to make sure that, that, that they're not, they're not bunching together. So we purchased those as well. These are the air purifiers. There's air purifiers in every single room and there's um air purifiers in all the offices. These are UV um air purifiers, which um is supposed to kill anything that's in the air, the viruses. And uh, uh, these I think were a great investment. They were purchased by, uh, everything we bought was purchased by brands. But I think these are a great investment because for the future, um, they, they will always, for flu, for anything, right? And they've got uh filters on them that Eric will be changing, um, changing out regularly. So we're very happy with these. They don't make a sound. You, you don't even know that they're going except that the light's on. There's a slight little, slight little hum to it. And so they're, they're fantastic. He has also ordered some very, very large air um movers for the cafeterias. And um, we're, we're expecting those to come in, um, in the next couple of weeks. And that's, that's why, that's what I have there um for photos, just to kind of show you where we are. There's a couple of things that are going on. Um, wanted to just bring your attention that there's so many of our kids that are still doing so many good things. Um, and, you know, I, I mentioned Cam Hunt. Uh, he's um in the, in the UNICEF club. That Linda Edwards and I um advise. And, you know, the kids have been raising money for UNICEF. That this is uh done by uh Leaders of Tomorrow, the City of Marlboro Food Drive. You can still make donations through March 1st, so there's a little plug for that. You can drop them off in Marlboro. And what they've done is this is a, a food drive competition between the three schools in Marlboro. Between Marlboro um High and Assabette and AMSA. And they've got a little trophy and they're gonna do it each year and kind of have a fun um competition on, on the food drive. So if you'd like to make a contribution, you can drop it, um, drop it right off at the office. And then we had a couple of our seniors, just wanna send out a quick congratulations. We had two seniors who are National Merit Scholarship finalists. Um, and Nikita and Sumida. So we're very proud of our, of our students. I looked at these pictures and these are probably a couple of years old. Um, they, they look much older now. They're, they're both seniors. But um, just wanted to make mention that our, our kids are still doing amazing things. And um, and our teachers are giving them um the very best education. That they can give them under the circumstances. And as difficult as this had been, uh, has been. Um, our teachers have, have just committed themselves to making sure that our kids are getting everything that they deserve. I also agree, they deserve to be together and we deserve this pandemic to be over. Um, and we all deserve to get our lives back together. So we're gonna do that in a very measured, careful way, um, following um what's required uh from us. From the state for, for sure. So upcoming, just a couple of upcoming events. Um, as all of you know, we have our strategic planning meeting um coming up this Saturday from nine to one. And then we have our next um staff uh, uh diversity and equity uh training coming up on March twenty-nine. And we will be having graduation for our class of twenty twenty-one. You may remember last year, uh, we couldn't, we couldn't have it inside at Hanover, so we had it outside at Four Kicks. It was lovely. And so what we've done is Mike and Brianna have been working on this. I also wanna say that Mike and Brianna have put together this whole in-person program as well. And they've done a fantastic job on that. I, I give them a huge shout out. The two of them have been working very hard with a team of people getting that all together. I, Mike has spent many, 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 many hours organizing all of that. Hiring all of the, the folks. They're also working on this graduation with another group of people too. And we have two dates and we'll see what we're allowed to do, but we have the original date, which is June sixth at the Hanover Theater. That's um been on the, on the calendar for the, for a year. And then we also have um June fourth outside at Four Kicks if, if we need it. We'll just wait to see what they allow us to do. And as I, I mentioned here, we have many other senior events. We are gonna do a senior breakfast. It's probably gonna be outside somewhere on the woodchips. But we'll do a senior breakfast and they'll still do their car ride around and, and all those types of things to try to make this as special for them as we can. And I actually think we're gonna be able to do more for this class than we did for the last class. Because last year, there were so many unknowns and people were so worried. And then I just wanted to remind her that, that uh February, of course, is Black History Month. And I love this quote by Rosa Parks and sometimes when I, I question um myself or I'm trying to make a decision. I, I think about this quote and she says, she said, "You must never be fearful about what you are doing when it is right." And so I, I try to, to live by that and it, it is, we've lived through a scary, fearful time. And I think it's time for, for all of us to uh get our confidence back and to do the right thing by our teachers, to do the right thing by our students. Um, and, and to try to um, try to get life as, as norm, back to normal as we can. And especially to be ready for next year. Cause the commissioner says we're going back to school, hundred percent, everybody, probably in masks. And we wanna be ready for that as well. And we're already thinking and planning ahead to that. Anyone have any questions?
Um, yeah, Ellen and I had a few questions. Um, i- if you can go back and talk about the expansion program you were talking about for the sixth to ninth graders. Um, a little bit more, wh- what does that actually mean? Are, are you saying not the um, any student between sixth and ninth grade will have an option to come in? And, and we'll be able to accommodate them?
Yes, um, um, Ben, we're going to, um, as I said, right now we have thirty. We're gonna bring that up to about forty-five. Um, because we can, we can add a few more kids into those classes where they are and still keep them six feet apart. We are, we'll be hiring more of those supervisors. So we have funds, the grant funds, and there's also funds in, in our uh sub account that we haven't, we haven't used. And we will um hire enough so that we can put about fifteen in the larger classrooms and ten to twelve in the smaller classrooms. And the kids will come in, they'll have headphones. Um, they'll, they can either bring in their laptops or whatever they're using now or Chromebooks from, from school. And um they will, they will sit um with the supervisors and, and they'll keep them on task and they'll continue to learn. And one of the things, the reasons that this program appeals to us all so much, Ben, is that there's consistency in their education. There's no in and out and people getting sick and shutting down classrooms and needing subs because, you know, it's. Everyone gets the same content. And one of the problems that we've seen in other schools or heard other educators talk about with like a hybrid system, where you're bringing in half. And then they stay home the next week and you're live streaming. Is that whoever is actually in the room is having a different experience than the ones that are outside. And there really isn't a lot of equity there. And so this way, the kids are still getting the same, what I think is an excellent remote online program. By their teachers. The schedule doesn't change. Um, the way attendance is taken doesn't change. They, they are able to do that. They're able to come into the school buildings safely, um, be together. It's also good for contact, contact tracing. And that's one of the problems with running a school like AMSA does, is that we don't have pods because kids are all leveled. And that means they're mixing and mixing and mixing all the time, which makes contact tracing for anyone who might bring COVID in, very, very difficult. We can pod these kids. There's ten to fifteen in a classroom. They had the same seats. They, they, every day they're in the same seat. So if Johnny gets sick, we know who's, who's been sitting with Johnny. We know, we, we, we can monitor and, and track all of that. And we're, we're buying, we're buying big tents so that the kids can go outside, eat lunch outside and spend time out there as, as the, the days get nicer. Um, so that's, that's what we're thinking.
And, and is it a, you have a max number or do you think you could accommodate if every sixth to ninth grader said they wanted to come in, you could accommodate everyone or is there?
I, I'm not, I, I don't, I'll tell you that I don't think that they're all gonna come.
Sure, right, yeah.
We're thinking, uh, we're thinking about, about three hundred in that range. Um, what we've found from the, the high needs um program that we created. We, we, we've actually had a tough time filling that program. And um, you know, we had a, a list of about a hundred students and, you know, we just keep going and moving down that list. And we found, as I said, that the older kids that had come in at the beginning were like, nah, no, um, um, I can, I just assume do this at home. Of course, they don't want anyone telling them not to use their phones either, right? Or, you know, don't, don't play, you know, you've got a tab up there and you're playing chess while Ms. Bowen is teaching. That's not cool. So the nice thing about these supervisors is they, they're watching them on land school all the time and they can tell. And so as soon as they see the chessboard come up, and that's a true story, they can just walk over and say, you know, just a reminder that. I, I can see what you're doing on land school and we need you to pay attention to Ms. Bowen's class.
All right, great. And do you have a timeframe for when you might consider this expansion?
Yes, yes. Um, as I, as I um had said in that term three letter. That we, we're gonna start something new or, or hope to for the fourth term. So that's on April sixth. And, you know, we also understand that, that with the kids being home, it's limited our parents who, who need to work. Um, and so, you know, we wanna make sure that, that we're considering that as well. Not only the kids and their em- emotional and social health, which is extremely important. But the burden that this has been on, especially for our, the parents of our younger students.
I can attest to that.
Yes, you can. I know you can.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. And the buses will be running and the lunches will be going and I think it's gonna feel more normal. And uh, you know, I understand the kids are still gonna be on a computer. Um, but I would rather know that they are getting the education that they really need and deserve every day from, from their teachers.
And this has nothing to do with the HVAC system. It has nothing to do, I mean, we, we can accommodate this without changes or do you feel like that? I, I mean, I just wanna tie off on what Jen had said earlier, right, about, you know, uh, our decision here is space management, right? Not anything to do with the HVAC system or anything like that, right?
Uh, right, so the, I, the um, air purifiers are in all of these classrooms, right? And so they are running, um, and they are, that they're working. They, they, they kill any germ in there, whether there was the airflow or not. The white building, um, the, the dampers are where we've been having the issue and those dampers are in the on position. They're just always running. Um, so that was one of, we, we kept it nice and contained there. Um, and there's air purifiers in, in every room in the middle school is, is the lower school as well. At the moment, there are some limitations in the upper school. I, I, I mentioned to, to Raj and Raul and Liz earlier. That um, one of the HVAC units in the roof uh died this week. And so um, there's no heat in one part of that, that building there. Uh, the, the lower part down near the guidance suite. Um, so, you know, he's working on that. He's ordered it. But at the moment, you know, that they were, were a little bit limited um there.
And last question, I, I promise, but it, it, nothing contingent on um, before we were watching uh test results in the surrounding towns. Are we still monitoring those in terms of, you know, using that as data? And you haven't mentioned it, you know, this in your thing that, you know, it's red here. It's, it's, you know, it's not red there, so.
Yep, it's yellow in, in Marlboro now. And um, when I looked today, uh, actually the result, the um update just came out tonight. Uh, the state is down to twenty-eight red towns and none of our core towns are listed in the red category any longer. So um, oh yeah, I, I monitored this like.
That's good news. That's good news. And that's just another data point. Yeah, it's another data point.
So, you know, I think be, between that and, and the vaccines rolling out and, you know, I, I. You can't really seem to pin the commissioner or, or anyone else down on when teachers are gonna start to be invited in. Uh, we do have some of, you know, the older folks that, that work at the school and they have been vaccinated or they're, they've just gotten appointments and things like that. And so we're really happy about that. And, you know, we want the anxiety level. That I have, you know, talked to the educators that I've talked to, who have been managing this hybrid or, or, or whatever. They, they talk often about the anxiety level of the people who are live in the buildings, right, and the, and the teachers. And, and how can teachers actually teach and feel when they're a nervous wreck about what, what they may be exposed to? Um, and so, you know, I, I was speaking with someone today. Who, who was positive for, for Corona and her husband as well. And it looked like they were kind of getting better and all of a sudden the husband took a real turn a- after ten days and ended up, you know, in the hospital. Uh, these folks are younger than me and ended up in the hospital and um is still on oxygen at home. So you just, you know, you don't know and people, people are still very, very nervous. So we wanna make sure. That we're running a safe program. People feel good about it. Our kids are getting educated. They have an opportunity to have some social interactions as well. We all need them.
Great, thanks a lot.
Just pop, popping in with a time check here.
Okay. Anyone else have any other questions?
Just one quick question because Jen brought this up and I frankly, I, I um. My understanding of the HVAC system and implications, because there's some kind of code, whether it's acid, liquid, or not. About the number of cycles that we push through and, and that's where that came from. And I don't wanna put you on the spot, but do you recall where that comes from? So, you know, if anybody wants to confirm, that's, you know, in one of the requirements.
Yeah, there's some uh guidance that came out. It should be on the Department of Education website um about ventilation. And um, I, I, I have it. It's in the, it's in the pile there, but it, but it would, it was information that we got, maybe like July. They have it in order on the Department of Education website um that talks about how many um air flow revolutions. That, that you need and it's different depending upon the space. And um, so. Most of the airflow has been re- remediated. The air purifiers will kill, will kill the germs. We're running hopefully really big units to, to move air um in the cafeterias. And as I said, those are, those are on order, but we're also getting tents. So that the kids can eat outside instead of worrying about eating in the cafeteria. And that may not be enough for some folks and they may not feel safe with that and that's okay. They can choose to stay home. It's one hundred percent their choice. They can choose to stay home. And their kids are gonna get the same level of education as the kids who come in. Kids who come in are gonna get a social experience as well, but the education is gonna be the same and that's where the equity comes in.
There's your own mute.
Sorry about that. Thank you, Bo. Um, I have Facebook Live up, so I did just wanna um let you know that a question did just. Pop up about um why the teachers aren't going to be in person. So I know you addressed that a little, but it might be worth just addressing.
So we can't fit a full classroom of students in a class. We can't fit, some of our classes had twenty to twenty-six students and we cannot fit them and, and distance them. We can't even distance them three feet with that, with that many students. So that would definitely mean that if we put a live teacher in a room, they would only get half the kids live. And they get half the kids that would have to stay home and, and livestream. And that's where we're concerned about the equity, um, and honestly, the rigor of our, of our academic program. Because the kids who are in front are manage, are, are having one experience. And the kids who are watching the teacher teach are having a different kind of experience. And we feel that there's more consistency this way, that they're all getting the same curriculum delivered to them in the same way. Um, and um, and it, it just keeps the, the program going the way, the way that it is. We do have some teachers that teach from within the school. So that's what we're thinking. That, that from everything I hear, the hybrid methods are not great ways to actually deliver curriculum. Uh, we have many parents who are teachers, who are either working in, in um hybrid systems. Who have emailed me privately and said, it, it's, it's a mess. It's a mess. You don't, you never know what's happening one day or the next. Cause you could have a teacher sick and out. Now they're out for two weeks. You're having kids in and out. You're doing contact tracing. And in this, this, and it's this constant flow. Um, we wanna keep some of it consistent and we feel that that's the best way to keep it really consistent. So there's always. So there's always a teacher there to, to pass on that, that curriculum. Our, our attendance with, with our teachers is, it's outstanding. Um, even the ones who have actually been sick and we have had a number of folks that have really been sick, um, have, have still been able to teach or had to take off minimum days. Now, if we were live, they would be home for fourteen days or until they got well, um, which could be much longer. Um, and, and this way, they're, they're still teaching every day. They're the ones that can deliver the curriculum. A sub cannot deliver a curriculum.
Other, other questions for Ellen? All right. Thank you very much, Ellen. Great job.
Thank you.
Uh, look forward to the, look forward to the next report.
We'll keep working on it. It's not a done deal yet. This is really development stage. And I mentioned to Roger earlier, we came up with this kinda like, this is, okay, this, this feels right. This is the decision that we're gonna do for fourth term on Tuesday. So this was two days ago. So we're, that we're really, Mike and Brianna are moving on it as fast as they can. But, but this really is in the development stage. So if you have suggestions, we're happy to take suggestions and feedback.
So finished the executive director Q and A. Next up, Jess with the, uh, faculty report.
Hello, everybody. How are you? Um, I will definitely stay within my five minutes. Um, I will say that the faculty is, um, it's very funny to think the academic year in February that we are already starting to think about next year. So we have, um, started the process of kids signing up for classes. As a matter of fact, I think that's wrapping up and teachers are being asked, like, you know, for budgets for next year. And, uh, so starting to think about next year and being hopeful about a lot of those things uh, has been a little bit of a lift, I know for me personally. I was spending a lot of time over vacation picking up sheet music for the return of course for next year. Uh, so, uh, that, that is happening for teachers. And then I think the other big thing for teachers is the, um, um, the, you know, the news from Commissioner O'Reilly's office, um, about, uh, so I think that that has sort of allowed teachers very concerned and worried. Uh, we're happy with, um, Ellen's efforts to keep us updated about the latest, um, about plans and things like that. Um, I, I would say a lot of teachers, um, are, they're, they're nervous because it seems like, uh, there's, uh, there's, first of all, of course, there's lots of different feelings on the staff. But I would say the, sort of the more predominant view is that, uh, things are going fairly well. And I understand that online learning for a lot of school districts has been largely disastrous. And I don't think that that has happened at AMSA. So it's not as good as in person, but it's, it's pretty good. And to upset that apple cart for a small benefit of getting a few months in person feels like it might not be worth the, the trade-off there. So I'm, that's sort of where faculty members that I've talked to are. There are a few faculty members who, you know, we, we do, we feel bad for the seniors. We feel bad for the sixth graders who aren't making friends. There, there's a lot of social, um, parts that are missing. We miss our kids. We, there, there is, um, a lot of people who wanna go back to school. I think if we knew we could just go back all the way to school, that would be, um, something, that would be a different situation than the hybrid. The hybrid really scares a lot of teachers. It feels like it's, um, sort of the worst of both worlds. And I think that that's where a lot of teachers are concerned. Uh, so, um, yeah, that's, that's my sort of sense of where the faculty is on that. I will add with a blatant and shameless plug that the AMSA Quiz Bowl team will be, um, appearing on High School Quiz Show this year. We do have an online version. We are taping our episode on March seventh. Um, it's a Sunday and I might be sending you all an email about how you can participate online and cheer us on for that. So watch for that. Thanks for the shameless plug. That's all I have.
Thank you, Jess. Uh, questions for Jess?
Uh, yeah, Jess, when is it going to be showing up on TV?
Um, I think the beginning of April, the, the episodes start airing. And, um, I don't know when our episode airs, but I, off the top of my head, but I will know by the next board meeting. So.
Excellent. Thanks. Good luck.
Yeah, we look forward to that. Other questions for Jess? Hearing no other questions. Uh, next up, we have Maura with the, uh, parent rep report.
Thank you, Roger. Um, and thank you, Ellen, for kind of putting all of that stuff. I know you and I have had a couple of conversations and I think it's helpful to see the things as they're moving forward. Um, and as Jen mentioned, she and I had a really good conversation about sort of where we're at right now as well. Um, I'm just gonna summarize real quickly because I know you sort of addressed it and some of the questions are, are outdated at this, at this time. Um, but really just a lot of suggestions from parents, right? Looking for ways to help our kids in what we've all acknowledged is a really just crummy, challenging time. Um, questions about, you know, if there are enough families who opted to not send their kids back, would there be enough room for the remaining students in school, right? So there's kind of like looking at that information and does that factor into things? Okay. Um, looking at, you know, if we had to pick and choose who gets to go back. You know what I mean? Like, if we sort of had to cherry pick our students, do we pick seniors and sixth graders, right? Like, there's, there's all these questions that I think parents, we all have, I have them in my head, right? Like, you're, you're kind of moving the chess pieces to see how things work out. And, um, I think it's just part of the process. And I think we have a much better picture tonight of where administration is at. Um, I know that I got questions, not only about the, the lottery as, as things were happening this week, but also at the same time being like, what are we gonna do with what, you know, Dees just came out with? And it was like, oh, wait, now I have to check the news. Wait, hold on. Um, and so I think it's, it's really the questions. I haven't gotten a ton of specific emails. Just, um, just messages here and there that are really kind of expressing the same concerns that, that we're expressing um, and asking me to just sort of keep the finger on the pulse and, and share the information out as we can. Um, one other piece of information that I did get or one, one question was that if I could just express that not everybody participates in social media, which we all know. Um, but I think that sometimes the viewpoints can get skewed one way or the other. And so I just wanna assure everybody that as a board and as an administration, we take into account not just what is said in the different Facebook groups, but also through emails and conversations and, and that sort of thing to get the best well-rounded picture we can. But, um, you know, I wanna thank Jen again for speaking up tonight because even though we talked, it's really good for, not everyone is in my head. Um, and so it's probably really helpful for everyone to hear from folks. So don't ever be afraid of, of speaking up.
Uh, any questions for Jess? Oh, sorry. Any questions for Maura?
I cannot answer Jess's questions.
Neither could I. I could not, would not do well in the Quiz Bowl. Or is it, or answering faculty questions? All right, uh, no questions. Thank you, Maura. Next up, we have Chair Business. So in Chair Business.
Sorry, Roger. I don't know if this was intentional. We had the check for board discussion items. I think it refers to.
Sorry.
Anything we may have tabled from the.
Thank you for keeping me on track. So, um, so we're checking with the board for discussion items following the ED report, the parent report and the faculty report.
Is this just to say whether or not we wanna come back to it or to actually?
Um, so this is just to collect the, the, uh, questions. And then at the end of the meeting, we will have a, we have a slot to discuss the, discuss anything that was raised or flagged.
No, I, I do have a quick comment in the public comment, but I can hold it to, to the end.
Okay. Public comment, comment. Okay, I've, I've, I have put you on the, on the list. Anyth- any other flags or further items to discuss later? All right. Chair Business. Uh, there's two items in Chair Business. Uh, the two items are a update on the ser- from the Survey Task Force from Raul and, uh, review of the plans for our offsite this Saturday from Sumini. So with that, I have no other Chair Business. I'd like to turn the floor over to Raul to, and the Survey Task Force to talk about the Survey Task Force results.
Thank you. How many of those fifteen minutes do I have?
Uh, at least ten.
All right. I'll try to keep this short. Um, so if you recall, we had our, um, poll, uh, poll survey in December. So it was running all the way to mid-December. So it's a little bit misnamed, uh, but it's still fall, I guess. But, uh, it's not in the typical timeline that we, that we actually do it. So we, we got the results right before a previous board meeting. We didn't have enough time to put this summary together. So this is basically a summary together by the task force on the results. And we follow the similar format. If you've seen this before, we try to do, uh, be consistent with that, starting with response rates, uh, which is always something that's hard to interpret, you know, what does it mean? But, uh, it was actually a, a, a little bit more participation than in the past. The staff, somewhat constant, about sixty-eight staff responded, which is, it's about half our staff. And then four hundred and thirty-five families responded, which is again, a little bit over, more than half. So that, that's not atypical. You can see last year's, uh, numbers by comparison. Um, and, and on the family side, obviously, you, you can see there's a big jump. So we had more families participating this time. Uh, it's hard to compare twenty-two to anything else. So I'm not gonna read too much into that. Uh, but we, we try to summarize the observations. So, um, after this meeting, everybody's gonna be able to access the full report from the survey on our website. Uh, I believe also including the comments, the only thing that you're not gonna see in the comments, we have redacted any teacher names or any specific, any individuals that, that weren't identified by the comments. But other than that, you'll have full access to everything that everybody said. So what we try to do is not to rehash that, but to, to interpret a little bit what we saw and provide observations. So here's some noteworthy results. Uh, number one is, there was a question that we added purposefully, um, to try to influence some grant writing that we're doing about Hanson Labs. And of course, nobody said it was a bad idea. So, um, in, uh, even in the responses, they were very cautious to say, yes, we, this would be ideal when we're past pandemic. So, um, it's a, so we just say that everybody wants Hanson Labs, uh, whenever it's appropriate and safe. Uh, and of course, the number one issue was how to get AMSA back to in-person learning. I don't think I need to elaborate on this. We have talked a lot about this and nobody would disagree with this being one of the number one issues, uh, that this school is dealing with. And, and by the way, this is both, on both sides from the staff and from the, from the, uh, families. Um, an interesting one that's a little bit related, but also had its own flavor to it was comments about additional student support. And, um, hopefully, Ellen, I mean, after this, we maybe give you a chance to comment on this. But, uh, not only for remote learning, but there were some concerns and, and comments about the canceling department and how that's working and others and efforts that have been done since these results were known. So I, um, I'm gonna accomplish my goal as a board member to highlight the fact that it was heard and, you know, to ask Ellen to provide any further details. But I'm not gonna try to answer what is being done because I, you know, um, that's, that's on the administration side. But, uh, suffice it to say, now, SSD, uh, please help me out with the, with the acronym Student Support Team. I get that right, which I believe encompasses counseling and other things, correct?
It, it's actually a, a team of people. Um, there's teachers that are part of SST also, um, Brianna and, um, I don't think Mike is on SST. You could correct me. Um, but there's the counselors, um, and they, what they're doing is they're screening, screening students who are struggling to, um, uh, initially set up some non, um, IEP or five oh four type accommodations and supports through a plan that we work out with the teachers, see if those work, monitor, um, and then decide if anything else needs to be put in place or not.
So, um, so again, you know, that, that, that was just some comments and, and responses relating to that, um, and how well, you know, the support in the counseling is working in this, uh, remote world. Uh, what's not new? So if you remember in the past, we said, hey, there's a lot of things that come up, uh, in the, in the surveys and that we, we are known to, um, take as a priority and address. So those things, uh, are less interesting to provide in the summary. But what's, what's not new is I think some of the things that might be worthwhile to talk about as a board. So number one was action versus communication. And this is my way of summarizing the, the comments about whether or not teachers are responding to, uh, to emails and communications and, and, and other things uh, versus actually doing something to address whatever is being brought up. So, again, this is just to say there have been some comments about how well that is working or not. I think in general, uh, parents were conveying that the fact that we're remote, it's actually making it easier in some way to, to have a grasp on what's going on in the classroom and assignments and things like that. Uh, but also, on, on the other hand, harder to see what action is being taken to address some of the things that, that have been raised. So, and I don't know if the, that's clear enough, but it's, it's, what's, uh, interesting to see a, a trend and I guess a theme there about, you know, how we're addressing communication with, with, between the families and the school. Um, but I, I say this is not new, but the part of it is that, that, um, that it's been recurring is about the workload. And what I do wanna highlight here is that this comment is now showing up on both sides. So I don't wanna assume that every staff responded as a teacher. But if I, if I think that the responses that we saw that are come from teachers, some teachers are agreeing with the facts, that, you know, families, we don't do this on purpose. The teachers are agreeing with the fact that we need to get better coordinating workload, uh, to make sure that our students are not overloaded. And, and again, there's, there's been approaches and coordination and things that have been done to try to address this. Uh, so that's, that's coming up again on, on the responses. So too much homework, um, we hear it. Now, let me, uh, focus a little bit more on each one of the surveys. On the staff side, uh, we picked, uh, three hot topics. And no surprise that one of them was diversity and inclusion. There, there's been a lot of conversations in, in these board meetings and, you know, a lot of, everybody has been at least aware of things that have been done and the training and the response to the training. Uh, we'll provide a little bit more detail as we show the comments. Uh, that, it's, that came through in a lot and, and very strongly in the comments and the responses. Um, so at, at the end of the day, I would say that, that nobody disagrees with, this is something that's worth addressing. The disagreement comes in how we do it. And that's, that's really what the survey is telling us. We need to get better at, uh, you know, we don't all need to agree, but we need to get better here on both sides of the, um, of, of the coin. Number two, remote learning, enough said. Yeah, that's what's a hot topic. It would be, uh, remiss if I didn't say it was. Uh, and number three, having to do with that homework and, and workload is, um, I, there was some interesting comments and, and, and suggestions actually from teachers saying, it's not about the number of classes, but about the depth of content. And I, I think that's a good example of showing that this is not a zero-sum game. You know, doing more homework doesn't mean that you're getting more, more learning and getting better academic excellence. But, uh, it's, it's all about the how deep can you get with the content? So this is a lot of, you know, it's kind of a little bit of everything that says a lot to do with remote learning, but also with the workload and it's, it's not one, one faceted issue. But again, it was a hot topic that came up through the comments and, and the suggestions that were made in the, in the staff survey. Now on the, um, oh, actually, I, I wanna give some samples because I think, uh, it's good to see the comments. You know, I, I, my opinion, the comments give a lot of valuable input that you don't really get from just the quantitative part of the, of the survey, which I'll share some highlights, but the, the comments are important. So we picked some positive comments, some not so positive comments, and then, you know, some suggestions. Because another thing that we try to do is ask everybody that responds to provide any suggestions and things that, that they think the, the schools should adopt. But, um, you know, the positive comments were about the school doing a great job about, you know, with the challenges and limitations we had this year. And in general, saying that AMSA is a great school. Uh, all these three were from the family survey. I'm not gonna read them all. But again, they're positive about how things are being dealt. Uh, we try to do this word cloud, if you see on the top right here. Uh, frankly, I don't think this adds any insight or value. We, we try to interpret it. But of course, we're gonna talk about learning and grades and kids and remote learning. So anyway, that's, that's a word cloud. Take it for what it is. Samples, suggestions. So the, the bolder ones came from the staff survey. Uh, somebody was suggesting using, um, the exercise equipment on, on pork kicks. That would be a nice fringe benefit for, for the staff. And on the issue of diversity, um, you know, and, and I'm interpreting what's behind this comments about getting to the data is how to measure representation. So do we even know the breakout of Hispanic and Black students in the core towns as opposed to? So do we even know the breakout of Hispanic and Black students in the core towns as opposed to the, you know, what they are at AMSA? To, to be able to say, we are representative of our communities or not? And I'm, I'm seeing Ellen and Sarah nod, so I'm assuming the answer is yes, but maybe we can share that information to be part of the discussion. And, and then from the family side, um, this was the, the best way to summarize this, you know, expanded computer science program. Somebody was suggesting that. Uh, our point of sharing these is to say, you know, we do go through the responses and the, the suggestions. So these were not the only ones, but, you know, just trying to share a couple. Uh, so I'll keep it at that. I think I'm over ten minutes, so I'll try to speed it up. Uh, on the, let's, let's call it on the concern side, so not on the positive side, but on the concerned side. Uh, we do know that, that the effects of online learning are, 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 you know, hurting us all. We heard it loud and clear today, so that came through. So there's a couple of examples here. Uh, and then there was a comment about integrity about adult community. So, you know, I, I think, uh, when you see the responses on, on the quantitative side, um, the integrity of the administration is not questioned, but I, I think we need to take a harder look about the whole community. When I say community, it's everybody. And, and again, the way this person suggested it was the adult community, doesn't mean just in the school, but outside of the school as well. Now, on the quantitative side, we just picked a couple of questions to compare, uh, to previous years. Uh, one that where there was a, uh, jump, you know, twenty-three percentage points on the positive side was about decision-making, um, um, how transparent this is in the schools. So again, there's only five people that disagree with that statement. And, and again, this is on the staff side. And then we added a question about, uh, resources and things that we could offer to the staff on, on doing their job better. There was, um, seventy-eight percent of respondents, so a big proportion of respondents said they wanted help on how to address lacking motivation in the students. So I, um, I need that for myself, by the way, so maybe that, that's something that's a common theme. But again, you'll see some of the responses and the numbers here on specific things that were suggested as part of that question. Now, on the family, um, we thought it was worthwhile comparing, uh, things that had moved from last year. It's not a huge move, but on the, uh, the integrity question that was mentioned before, again, a very positive feedback here. Uh, there's only four people in twenty-twenty, in this survey, that strongly disagree with that statement. And then on the staff side, we picked the one about decision-making, uh, transparency, which I shared before. Uh, not only because it was positive, but also it was a positive improvement since last year. You know, uh, as you see, there was a negative trend between twenty-eighteen and twenty-nineteen, uh, ended at fifty-six percent favorable. Which by the way, this is the definition, we talk about this all the time, well, Panorama, uh, defines favorable, non-favorable, which it's a little misleading. But even then, um, there was a huge improvement on that this year. So we wanted to highlight that. So I'm going to close with a reflection. And, and hopefully, you know, this makes us feel better about the school. There's a lot of topics that are divisive. And, uh, when we talked about the survey last time, we, we used the term that, that Ms. Bowen had coined of cleavages. So there's a lot of cleavages. And I'm going to put up here comments from at least two topics that are cleavages in our school. And, and you'll notice, uh, wait, this is a, yeah, so there you go. So you'll know, I'm not going to read through them, but what you'll notice is that there's comments on the left that argue one side of the argument. And there's comments on the right that argue the complete opposite side of that same argument. Two of these have to do with, um, with diversity and inclusion. And the third one, I believe, um, yes, the third one's about online learning. And, and one of the, so I, I mean, just to give you the general sentiment, you know, one of them on the top says, uh, I think we're doing well on, on trying to make everybody happy and, and addressing the issues that were brought up on, on diversity and racism. And in that same topic, somebody said, I'm concerned that I haven't seen anything done in the issue of diversity or racism. You know, and on the issue of the trainings, you know, somebody said, I don't have an issue with the trainings, I think was great and very informative. And then on that same topic, somebody said, the sessions were misguided and impactful, but, you know, emotional, misleading, controversial. So I have two reflections on this. Number one is that you can't make everybody happy. There will be people that have different perspectives, different opinions, different backgrounds, different reactions of what the school does or doesn't do. That will always be the case. So we, we shouldn't, uh, concern ourselves with trying to make sure we're pleasing everybody. But the nu, the, the second reflection, I think it's even more important and profound. And is the fact that if you read through these comments, and if you read through every single comment as we did, and, and by the way, this is a, a substance and the citing of them, but if you can read them all, you'll notice that as much as they disagree on their perception of whether it's good or bad of what's going on, we all want the same thing. There is no conflict here between both sides of the coin on addressing things that may, uh, make our students feel not safe in the school. There is no disagreement on that. Both sides are saying the same thing. Both arguments are, are not saying that we don't want that. We're basically saying, we have different perspectives on how to solve the same problem. And I think it's something for us to learn that that's what we should be focusing on. We should be focusing not on the differences and, yes, we should address when there's a concern either direction. But what we should be focusing on is, uh, on, on what is the common ground and what are the kinds of things? Nobody will argue that we're all here to make sure our students get the best education they can and that we can provide an excellent academic experience with integrity, building community, and, uh, making sure that we, we achieve that excellence. So I'll leave you with that. And I know I'm way over my ten minutes, I took more than the fifteen, I think. Uh, but hopefully, I'll leave you with time to sum any, to, to talk about, uh, Saturday's session.
Uh, first, uh, questions for Raul and the survey task force team? Now I'll have a comment myself.
I would just say, great job, Raul. I appreciate all the, uh, uh, analysis and then the commentary as well. I think the, uh, insight you brought and with the examples, you know, drove home the point, so thanks a lot.
Yeah, I concur. Um, I know how hard it is to, um, go through everything and, and analyze everything, but I do think that you broke it down, um, very well, Raul, so thank you.
It was not just me, by the way, so. Thank you, uh, Jill and Jess and Ellen and Lynn, everybody that listened to the task force.
So, uh, as far as my comments, first, I'd like to apologize for putting Raul on the spot. I put it, the, uh, time slot in the agenda without discussing with, with him ahead of time. So, um, I think we, we, I think we devoted a, 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 the right and fair amount of time and the survey results will be there. Um, also, I think I'd like to thank all the responders. And I think it's just amazing that we had fifty percent participation by our parents and our staff in the survey. That we have a group of very passionate parents and employees that really care about the school and care about our success. I think that's a, a great indication. And I think you're spot on that, you know, we, we will just, we disagree about the how, but we don't disagree about what we want to accomplish. And it's great that, great that that discussion is occurring. And then encourage the continued passion for our school. Uh, with that, again, note, this, this will be, Raul, correct? This will be posted on the AMSA website for everybody to access and read.
That is my understanding. And I'll, I'll share the presentation as well, Sarah, and I'll, I'll send it to you, I'm sure you'll.
We post the, um, Raul's slides. We post the, um, the numbers and the, and the, the percentages and things like that from, that we get from Panorama. But we typically do not post the comments. And, and I would hesitate to do that because I, I would be concerned that the staff wouldn't feel that they could, um, write in those comments whatever that they want without it being put out there. I, we've never, uh, actually put the, the text boxes, comments out.
Thank you for the corrections. I misspoke, yeah, I misspoke then, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, uh, with that, I'd like to turn the, changing topic. I'd like to turn the floor over to Samini to talk about our preparations for Saturday's board offsite meeting.
Sheila, did you want to tee this up or do you want me to just keep going?
No, I mean, Samini has done, uh, amazing amount of work getting us ready for Saturday. So I want to hand it over to her. She is the content man or matter expert at this point, I think, so all yours.
Okay, um, I'll just, I'll just hand it off to you for the second portion of the meeting efficiency agenda. Just giving you a heads up that I'll do that. Okay, so, um, I'm excited that we'll be spending some time together with the offsite, uh, on Saturday. And at a high level, we have two agenda items for our offsite. So we want to define our strategic goals and start to introduce a sustainable framework that we propose to use going forward to, uh, keep our strategic goals in a place where it's scalable and sustainable and we can look at it on an ongoing basis. Um, and then the second part of the agenda that we'll be working on is meeting efficiency, which I'll let Sheila speak to. But I'll, um, just briefly tell you about how we'll work on defining our board's strategic goals. Um, for strategic goal planning, we're really not starting from scratch. We're starting with a lot of history from our past offsites and also the vision that we defined last January in the board offsite. And we're going to use this along with much of the work that the board committees have done in the past year or more as background for a brainstorming activity. So then we'll take the results of that brainstorm and we'll begin to categorize and refine and begin to identify ownership across the board and across our committees. And the primary output that I think we'd be looking for from this planning session is to define what the board thinks of as a long-term goals, our three-year goals, and some concrete one-year objectives. And I know there's been some questions about what those one-year objectives, you know, the time span that we will be looking for. So the board's already, um, from past goals has identified what the committees are working on this past year. We're going to continue that, but I'm picturing that we'll define a set of goals that will either, uh, begin from this next offsite, uh, and then move into the next academic year. Uh, as far as I know, Ms. Lindsay, you had said that we would define goals that were for the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two academic year, which is the, what I think we'll end up with. And, um, hoping to then have a spreadsheet, uh, that we'll then use as our framework going forward. Um, and using the vision really as an anchor to our board goals, which means that, um, every single goal that the board thinks about is something that contributes towards the vision. Um, and so we'll be using that as our framework. And that's what I hope we will start to do, uh, on Saturday. I'm knowing that we're going to be working together for a two-hour period. I'm guessing that we'll probably need more task time after the offsite, but we can discuss that as we get closer to the end of, uh, to, of the Saturday session. And then I'll turn it over to Sheila to talk a little bit about the meeting efficiency work that we're planning to do on Saturday as well.
Thank you. So I think that, um, it's going to be productive on Saturday. And I know it's a lot, um, it's heavy content to have us all doing virtually together, but I think we've become experts at doing that at this point, I guess, um, just like the kids have. Um, what I'm really excited about is that what Samini has put together and the discussion that I want us to have about meeting efficiency is kind of taking everything that everyone's done in the years that preceded Samini and myself and, and some other board members being here to the next level, the next step, and having it be a sustainable, trackable, um, theory and document for us to move forward. And similarly with meeting efficiency, now I'd like to just go over, um, in a brief period of time, some ideas. Ellen's done a fantastic job getting us some information from some other schools about, um, tools that they use, um, and which kind of led me down a rabbit hole of research about nonprofit and, and school, uh, board management generally. Just to think about what our next steps as a board can be to make our meetings more efficient, to make, um, the time that we put in better used. And part of that is for selfishly for ourselves, right? Because we all put in an enormous amount of work. But also, I think as we want to look towards expanding the board, um, getting, you know, uh, some different types of people on the board, we want to be running at that kind of efficient, productive rate that will make that attractive to them and that won't be dissuading them from, um, putting in that commitment. So that's kind of my goal with the meeting efficiency, um, portion of the program on, um, on Saturday. So I think that's about it. I don't know if there's anything else or anyone has any questions.
Questions for Samini or for?
I'm Sheila.
Hi. Nice to meet you, I'm Roger.
That's okay, I forgot my kids gave me everything.
All right.
So I need to confirm, we have homework, right, for Saturday?
Yes, you have some pre-work that needs to be looked over beforehand, Raul. Get right on that. Um, but yeah, just in order to, to make it a productive and an engaged session, if people could take a look at that, uh, Sami, um, sent that out. And it's, you know, it should be fairly easy to go through, so please.
Yes, thank you. I think it'll make our brainstorm very efficient if you go back and look at that history, uh, because there's a lot of good ideas there, um, and you want to bring your own forward. Uh, I just want to make sure that we reflect those past ideas and what the board has done previously, uh, you know, and take it forward in this new framework. So, just don't want to lose the good stuff that we already have.
And I think a lot of it, for those of you like Raul and Roger that have been around for a little bit, it's stuff you're pretty familiar with too, you know, that, um, yeah, so there you go.
Great. Any other questions? No questions? Excellent, well, thank you. Uh, that, that ends the chair business. At this point, we're on to committee reports, starting with education. Liz, you have the floor.
Okay, um, I will, uh, make this quick and hopefully give back some time. Um, but I did just want everybody to, um, know that we did spend our entire last meeting, um, going over the, uh, report card that came out. Um, and this is something that we're going to make sure is on our calendar, um, as an annual event. Um, there were a couple of questions that came up that we are, um, either Mike and Brianna or myself are, are looking into. A couple of them just, um, came up around what the funding actually looks like for our higher need population, because that is, um, that was one of the areas that's tracked year over year. So, so that was just sort of an open question. And then we also had a question, I think similar to what just recently came up, was just what do the core towns look like and how do, how do we compare? So that, I'm going to take a deeper dive on that and just do a little analysis around that. Um, I think the only thing that really the board needs to sort of be aware of and, and something that we're going to keep track of is really looking at sort of what the special education numbers look like and what impacts that have on the budget. So we just want to make sure that, um, you know, we're addressing the special education population and that we're, um, we're making sure that, that they have the necessary budget based on the numbers. Um, because again, they tend to go up and down, um, within each year. And so we would just like to, to make sure we're keeping an eye on that. Um, but I think overall, I think that, you know, again, I think as we talked about earlier, we have some really good numbers in terms of our attendance, in terms of our, you know, lack of issues within the school. Um, we, we're very fortunate in that respect and, and that was something that, that certainly came out in our discussions, uh, this past month. Any questions on the report card? And just to give everybody a perspective, this is a report card that comes out from DEES. It includes all of the, um, uh, different school, uh, communities within the state of Massachusetts. So it's, it's across the board, it's not just specific to AMSA. So, just a little background on that. Uh, that's it for Ed Committee, thank you.
Thank you, Liz. Would it be possible for you to post a link to the, uh, report card in the, as part of the meeting minutes?
Yes, I will, uh, I'll get that over to Sarah.
The report card is actually, um, already up and posted.
Uh, I think in addition, it would be useful to just include it, a link to it in the, in our minutes.
Okay.
In the meeting minutes, yeah. We'll just include the link there as well, so people can access it easily.
Will do.
And thank you for getting it posted independent of that as well. Any other questions for Liz or the Education Committee? Next up, I have Governance. Sheila, you're back on.
So I mean, really, our focus has been getting ready for the offsite on Saturday, but I thought, I hate to put Raoul on the spot again, but I think I am also going to ask Raoul. So Roger and Raoul have asked Governance to play a role in our ongoing efforts with diversity and inclusion. So I was going to pass that over to Raoul for a moment, just to discuss that.
Yeah, and I got to say, we don't have a conclusive thought, but something that we thought it was worth bringing to the whole board for discussion. And the real question is, what's the right way to structure this from a board perspective? To establish an ongoing focus on the diversity and inclusion issue? And originally, we thought, well, that lives in governance, because, you know, the things that we might influence, our policies or reviewing, you know, the extent of the involvement of the board on that topic needs to be, have established policies and nothing else. But as we had that discussion, that governance, and Sol Mini, feel free to comment, because I think you were the one that brought this up, we realized that maybe that's something that the whole board should be involved in. So is the right approach to make that its own task force? And my reaction to that was, well, task forces are supposed to be temporary. I think this is not something that should be temporary, it should be established. But maybe what's temporary is the first action item, which was kind of participating and being involved with administration on defining that equity vision that's being worked on and, you know, that we are already embarked on, but what happens after that? So like I said, it wasn't a conclusion on, here's our recommendation, but if the rest of the board wants to have an opinion on, do we make this a task force? Do we keep to talk just about policies and, you know, the influence of the board and on the discussion at governance? Or do we continue to bring this up as an ongoing topic at the full board meetings? That's what's on the table. So I welcome it in comments.
Raoul, if I can add, one thing I'd like for the board to think about is, as we start to define the goals on Saturday, you know, part of the brainstorm is about thinking about what these, what we want to achieve. And so stating what you said right now, I'd almost like to write that down so that we have that as part of our goals. And then, you know, one thing you'll see as we start to define this is that a lot of our goals are actually going to cross committees. So the question is, you know, how do we define ownership in that particular regard and not silo ourselves into committees as we go about achieving the goals? Because they are really collectively board goals. And this feels to me like a similar one. And so we'd have to think about how we want to structure ourselves in the coming years, you know, and who wants to take ownership of what as we move forward in that framework? So I feel like there will be an opportunity for us to discuss it there as well. But just, this was a good segue for me to at least, you know, put a plug in for the board to think about that as we go into Saturday.
Now, one thing I do want to say, just for the record, is number one, is that yes, we can discuss this on Saturday, and this would influence our goals. And number two is, what is the role of the board on the issue of diversity and inclusion? Because I definitely don't want to give the impression that the board is pushing the administration or is pushing the issue on anybody. And the board's fiduciary responsibility is to make sure that if there are concerns raised for any aspect of the climate of the school, including issues of racism, that we respond appropriately. And we respond by making sure that the policies are in place for those things to be addressed. But the board directly doesn't enforce policy. The board directly doesn't, you know, tell administration what to do. It's something that we work together as a team, and, you know, the board's role is a governance role. And that's, that's really the extent of what we do as diversity and inclusion. Of course, addressing concerns of the community is always part of what the board does. So in whatever appropriate way we can do that, we'll continue to do that.
So Raoul, what about actually, not a task force, but actually a DEI committee? An actual separate committee that, let's say, another committee had a question and diversity is an issue, like you guys work together. Like, let's say Development gets a $1 million donation from a group that has potentially, you know, racist ties or something, you know, consult with the diversity and inclusion committee and, you know, work together. Maybe there should be an actual separate committee, because there will be issues that come up in each, whether it's governance, development, education, that, you know, you could have like a subcommittee within each of diversity, but maybe have an outright over, like covering all of that diversity committee, maybe.
It's possible. I don't know if that would require amending bylaws, Roger. I don't know. Are the committees formed in the bylaws? I don't know.
So if we were to stand up another committee, that would be a bylaw change. So, but I think that would be, that's administering, that is the easy part.
Yeah, we wouldn't restrict the committee, because it would be administrative difficulty. I agree with you, Jill. I think two things, Jill. I think the committee's a great idea, but I also think to Sol Mini's efforts, a SMART goal for each of the other committees has to consider the diversity and inclusion in their, in their committees as well. So I think there's a sub-responsibility, but I do think that a more global commitment to that, if not in governance as a stronger priority or a committee by itself, I do think we should consider that to get moving forward.
Yeah. I do see a comment on the live stream about involving all stakeholders, and I think that's an important part of the question that we have on hand. But I also want to acknowledge how much work that Ellen and her team are doing in this. And so I think to Raoul's point, you know, there's a lot of involvement of parent and student stakeholders as part of Ellen's work. And I want to, you know, I think we want to make sure as a board that we're supporting and supplementing that work, and what does that mean? And I think that's Raoul's question. And Ben, you're making a similar point as well. Am I hearing everybody correctly?
Yes.
Yeah, I agree. And we're not taking responsibility, we're just looking to help guide, right? I think, and provide, yeah.
Right, we're not, we're not taking, there are places within the board, you know, and the committee might be a, the committee concept might be a vehicle that we can include all stakeholders. You know, we have, as a board, we have responsibility for reviewing policies to make sure that they are, support diversity and inclusion. That is clearly in the board. We have the ability to recruit and that our board itself be representative of our community and be more, be diverse. So there are, there are things that are a responsibility of the board. So I think there are places where we, as a board, can act in to improve our diversity and inclusion. And, but we are not going, we are not going to get into a hands-on operation to tell Ellen how to do diversity and inclusion. We can set goals. I don't know if that helps answer the question or makes it more muddy.
That was my comment in governance. I am concerned about the idea of a diversity or a DEI committee on the board, just because it seems to me that it might muddy the waters of management and sort of an issue that is day-to-day operations rather than, than the board's focus. But Jill, your example sort of was clarifying for me. I appreciated that, that there are, of course, issues that affect all of our committees that that comes up. So I just think that as the board, we need to sort of just be cognizant of that these issues don't become us, you know, messing where it's not really our job to be.
It may be interesting to see what other schools, I mean, this is a problem that the whole country is facing. It'd be interesting to see what other school committees have done in this area that we can learn from others. We don't need to invent the wheel ourselves here. So I'd encourage, encourage people to think about this, do some research, find out what other best practices or worst practices are that we can avoid, and continue the discussion next month. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Anything else for Governance?
No, we're all set, thanks.
All right, thank you, Sheila. Finance, Kristen?
Okay, I'm going to share my screen. Let me know when you can see. Looks good to me. Thumbs up, thank you, Jess and everybody. So for Finance this month, we reviewed the December and January results, both individually and combined. I'm going to go over the combined results. Total income for the two-month period was $20,000 over budget. And for, for that, the majority is in the tuition line with some reductions on the grants and donations line, which is really timing as well as placement on the financial statements. We've actually reclassified some of the revenue into the costs, because they're lowering the costs. And the other major item are student programs and athletic programs, and the majority of the decline there is due to the remote learning and timing on the athletics and student program to some degree. From an expense perspective, our salaries are spot on, pretty good planning on Leanna's part. Nural taxes are due to a one-time, we're a little bit low there due to a one-time catch-up from the insurance company for some timing with folks who have departed. It takes a little while for the insurance companies to catch back up. And we've had, again, timing of expenses due to remote learning and also just sometimes you can't plan for them in the budget appropriately, like professional development. They don't necessarily come out evenly throughout the year, so we've seen a lot of that happen. So on the total expense line, we are favorable or lower expenses than budget by about $200,000. And so on a net basis for the two months, we are $226,000 favorable. And so we have a surplus of 287 versus 60 for the two months. On a year-to-date basis, it's really the same story. Our revenue is higher than expected on a year-to-date basis. Again, the tuition comes out four times a year with an adjustment versus plan, and we're expecting the next update in March. There could be a correction on that line. Again, it's contingent on budgets and the state making final determinations, as well as the cities and towns, based on their budgets. So we'll wait and see how that looks come March. It wouldn't be retrospective, but it would be prospective in that adjustment. So we might see the back end of the year look a little bit different than the front end. And again, same timing associated with student programs, athletic programs, and no revenue from transportation, because the buses haven't been running. So a total year-to-date increase over budget of $92,000 on the income side. And again, grants and donations, you can see they're falling on plan, so in the year-to-date, that's caught up. Again, salaries are good, catch-up credits kind of flowed through year-to-date. Professional development, again, is timing, that's our biggest item next to the facilities costs, which are favorable by about $200,000, again, primarily due to the remote learning, right? So some of that savings, we will see flow through permanently. And again, some of that will be timing. And as Ellen and team are evaluating the back half of the year and what that in-person looked like, the numbers may change and shift a little bit in the back half of the year. So, but favorable for going forward, we're certainly in the green. Total expenses are $630,000 favorable so far on a year-to-date basis. And therefore, the surplus is also about two, about three times greater than what was expected as a result of that. So very favorable financials this time around. I don't know if anyone has any questions at this point. I have one more item to share that we didn't get to last month regarding all the work on the donations. So, you know, we had wanted to show this last month, and I forgot to present it. Leanna puts together, along with everyone who's responsible for their grants, a good summary of where that income is coming from and where the expenses are going. Obviously, they have to report back on every grant and make sure that they itemize the expenses. The grant amounts can change, especially with COVID, and they keep on top of that on a regular basis. So a good example of that is COVID. So just as a breakdown, in this year's budget, there's $635,000 of funding coming from grants, and it's from three key places. Normal recurring grants that we get on an annual basis, guidance grants that are multi-year in this particular case, but also recurring, and COVID, special COVID money. So $200,000 for recurring, 140 this year for guidance programs, and $270,000 in COVID programs, which is made up of several. And I showed an example to the right where you can see the type of detailed reporting. So this is the COVID Grant 102, which is the primary 225 per pupil. And you can see it's $200,000, it's very significant to the school. It includes Zoom licenses, monitors, supplies and equipment to sanitize the building, a lot of that, all the air purifiers Ellen showed us in her slides, the Plexiglas that we saw today, which looks amazing in the caf rooms, and all the studies and all the other expenses. And you can see the left and the right, you know, when the, when the grant first came out, there were certain needs and certain requirements in the grant and subsequent changes to both the school as well as the grants could have required changes in that as they get submitted. And so I just wanted to show the extra work behind the scenes that the team is working on, so that everybody understands that this is significant effort, it's detrimental to the school operations, and it's just really wonderful that the team continues to go after all the funds that are available for everyone. So that's kind of an FYI for everyone, to see behind the scenes what the finance team at AMSA is working on for everybody. So that's what I have. If anybody has any questions.
I have a question, if you don't mind, Kristen. First of all, thank you for sharing the grant slide, because I feel like that is really helpful information. We keep hearing about all these grants, so seeing the detail on that is great. Can I ask, where does the grant money come from? Like, who's giving us this grant money? Is it from the state? Is it federal money? Is it, is it private things? Or do you have a sense of that? Is it all over the place?
It's all over the place, but for example, a lot of the money, you can see kind of in the left-hand side of the colored chart here, is some description. So on COVID, and Leanna can probably kick in here, but FEMA, for example, has a program. It was a specific technology grant that came in from the government. The 225 per pupil was, was that federal or state, Leanna?
Most of it's federal.
Federal, right. So I don't know if you want to share some more about that?
Well, the CARES Act, the FEMA, the technology grant, the Grant 102, that's all federal money. The Title I, II, IV, and II-40 grants, that's grants that we've always received in the past. The, the guidance grants are also federal money. And that's about it. That's, that's the summary where it comes from.
Thanks, that's my gov teacher coming out.
And we do have a state grant coming. It's about $30,000. And we have an additional $80,000, $85,000 coming from the federal government that you'll see on the next update.
That's great. So a lot of these expenses, so some of the favorability we're seeing too, is a, is a result of some of these costs, right? So we would see the expense and it'd be offset, and it would be all built in, which is great. And some of these assets are forever assets too, which is wonderful. Like, these air purifiers are, they're there in the classroom still last as long as they can, so it's great. Thanks, Leanna.
No problem.
Good?
All right, any other questions for Kristen? Thank you, Kristen. And Leon and the whole Finance Committee. But Development Committee, Ben?
Yeah, sure, I'll make it relatively quick. We met in February. So we had an initiative going on in, end of January, early February, where Development Committee has reached out to two other entities that are also providing similar services to the school, one being the PTO and the second one being the Gulf Committee. Our last meeting, we invited the Gulf Committee to come kind of present what was the successes of the golf event last year, and then collaborate on ways that we could work together for this year, to be able to create synergies and leverage each other for advancing both of our agendas. So I think the meeting went very well. We actually spoke the whole time, I think, on the golf meeting. I think we created a good rapport with Krista Barton that was on from there, and I think we created some opportunities that will strengthen, I think, the golf tournament this year, but also... the golf tournament this year, but also show, uh, you know, collaboration between two entities here at, uh, AMSA. Um, the upcoming meeting, uh, we're gonna, uh, the PTO will be joining to, to explore similar, uh, collaborations and communications there. Uh, we did work in the last meeting, uh, appreciate Mike Finkel's work, um, creating a new landing page for, uh, our collabora, our, um, Development Committee kind of efforts so that people have kind of one place to get information and different ways they can collab, or, uh, communicate and, and, uh, make donations to the school and also see what progress we've made in, in those areas. Um, and then we're, uh, continuing to find other ways to leverage our investments. Um, so our donor perfect investment that we have on a monthly basis, how do we actually grow that out and start using, uh, what we pay for, uh, more efficiently? Um, but also, uh, take advantage of some of those things. So worked with, um, uh, Mark, uh, to get, uh, some documentation and training and just get a definition of what we have for donor perfect. So we're, we're working forward on, on that as well. So, uh, that's what I have for the Development Committee this time.
Thanks, Ben. Any questions for Ben? Here, no question. See, so we've got, um, now, now we're into the point of, uh, the board discussion of items nominated from public speak ED. So basically, this is a place in the meeting to discuss or review items that were mentioned earlier in the meeting. I have a note that Raul had a, a comment.
Yes, and I, I think the sentiment of my comment has already been expressed, but just to make it clear, I, I wanted to thank Jen Hunt for speaking up today. Uh, not only because it takes a lot of courage to, to come to this board meeting and get in front of the board and, and share our thoughts, especially when it's something that's very close to our heart and passion and some hard, uh, sometimes hard to articulate. Uh, but also that she did it in a very respectful way. So, you know, she did it the right way and challenged us and the administration to look past the obstacles and brought on her, her concerns in, in a very, a very good way. So I wanted to thank Jen. And also I hope, um, it's hard to not turn this into a dialogue, but some of her concerns hopefully were addressed with Ellen's report and, and her answers about, you know, what, what really are the prerequisites for the HVAC system and things like that. And hopefully, you know, if not, uh, she'll be able to, she'll feel comfortable reaching out, uh, to clarify that. But, um, I just wanted to thank her for, for speaking up and for bringing that up. That's, uh, that's the kind of participation that we need to encourage in the school.
Thank you. Any other board discussion or topics for board discussion from earlier in the meeting?
Can I, can I just ask a question, I guess? I, I really appreciate Jen's stepping up and making a comment. One of the things I thought I heard in her voice, but I, I could be just hearing things, was just the concern for the, the mental health of the kids. And I know that was one of the survey questions where it was polarized. One, one parent said, you know, "Let's not worry about the mental health. Let's just worry about the mission." And another parent said, "We should all be worried so greatly about the mental health." So what is the board's role in this? I mean, it's a mental health crisis for a lot of children. Like, what is the board's role? Is that something we should talk about at the strategic? Or clearly, as an oversight board, there should be some role, I would think, over this mental health crisis of the children. Not every child has it, but some kids have it severely, so.
Well, Jill, we're happy to put together a list of all the services that we are offering. And, um, you know, Kate and her, her team have collaborated with, with outside agencies and, um, you know, they've done a lot of work around this. And, and they, and they work in with kids individually all the time. Um, so, you know, we, we, it, it's a national crisis, a worldwide crisis.
Right. But we had a parent come to the board. So how, you know, how does the board adjust that, you know?
Mm-hmm.
The school is addressing it very well. I mean, extremely well. The school is, yes, but...
It's hard, but, uh, you know, I, I'm hoping that we're gonna see, um, you know, some, some benefits also from the, the supervision program because kids will be in the school, we're hoping.
Right.
Yeah, and I think, Jill, part of it is terrifying, and I'm, this doesn't relate to Jen, it's someone specifically. So, you know, it, it's not about what she said, but terrifying how people understand the role of the board to be. Because we approve, uh, policies, we approve budgets. Um, but we're not necessarily in the day-to-day deciding what's gonna happen in the next term and whether it's gonna be remote or not. I mean, I, I know we have, we approve Ellen's report and, and that's basically it, but, uh, uh, we agree. We agree. Everybody wants to go back to school. The board is not deciding whether we go back to school in person or not, other than through policy. And, I mean, that, that's part of it. I'm not the limit of our, our role, but, I, I don't know if that's what you meant, but, I, I don't know how else we can help with, with, uh, mental health other than make sure that the resources are there for the, for the administration and the staff to do their job.
Well, if I could add to that too, and, and I don't, I'm not speaking for Jill, but I think I'm picking up on a little bit of what you're saying too. I think, and it's hard to be in that dual role as parent and board member. Um, so I'm being conscious, very conscious of that. But I think it is concerning when there are other schools and other places that are, that are going back or that have been back. There's information about teachers as spreaders or non-spreaders. And these kids are hurting and it's, and it, it's overwhelming, I think, for all of us, teachers, parents, the kids. And I, and I, I hear Jill's, you know, concern about that and, and concern for what we can do about that. And I've had parents tell me they're pulling their kids out of AMSA if we don't go back to school next year, and it's gonna hurt our school. And I, I think that that's, it just, I, I'm not voicing this well, but I think there's a lot of concern and a lot of frustration. And I'm not saying that people haven't done an awesome job. I'm so grateful to my kids' teachers. I'm so grateful to Ellen and Mike and Brianna. Um, so please don't take it that way, um, at all, but yeah.
No, I, I, I understand that the, the commissioner has, um, assured us again and again in the last two calls that his plan is to have everyone back 100% in the fall. Um, and, you know, we're certainly, it will probably be in masks and, and that, but we certainly hope that's the case. Um, I mean, that's, that's what we're hoping for. And the idea of, of, you know, we certainly won't, will not do a remote system next year. Um, I, I would love to see 100% of us back in school with masks. Um, and, um, and, and hope that that, that happens the next year for sure.
And, and maybe, you know, another opt, or idea is that, um, and, and maybe not every meeting, uh, but I think maybe sometimes, Ellen, reiterating the actual programs that you know are going on, right, to us? And so I think, yes, you talk about how we've invested and we're doing as many of these programs. Maybe just examples in your report of, you know, how we've implemented any kind of results you can see of, hey, these programs are beneficial, we're, you know, I, I don't know if there's a way to, to demonstrate to us the success of all the hard work you're doing in a way? Not that, you know, is there a way to maybe report differently so that we can say, "We, we support all these policies and, and it is a high priority for us." It's, it's not just something that, you know, um, we're just, you know, turning our, and we're not doing that. I'm just saying, is, is there a way to show more of the, the, those programs to us?
Do you mean, um, the success of the, um, the in-school supervision program right now?
No, no, no. More like, uh, the, what are, what we're doing for mental health of the children, not the in-school pieces, right? So what, those extra programs that the, the councilings are putting in place, the different things that are going on, and just reiterating those, you know, in your report of talking about, here are some new, new programs, and, and just bring them to light a little bit more, um, and, and more details just so, you know, anyone listening to this board meeting can see it as well. And, and we get to see a little bit, um, you know, a different, or not different, but a little more every, every month into, uh, just the, the, all the hard work you're doing and, and the counseling and things like that. Because, um, there is no right answer, but it's just good to show that there's progress, that there's investment, that there's, you know, don't just, you know, or I guess you're doing a good job, just maybe a little bit more detail on, on, on all those things and.
Oh, sure, sure. Yeah, I'm sure Kate would be, um, happy to do that. You know, it was interesting to me because, you know, Maureen and I talked after she, after she talked to, um, to Jen. And, and I, I realized in that moment was, wow, no one thinks that we're doing anything to get ready for school. And, um, you know, because in my mind, we're obsessed with it. I mean, it's, it's all we're doing and talking about and thinking about. We've spent so much money. You saw the grants and, and we've been buying stuff since, since, geez, those grants came out in August, uh, July. And so in my mind, it, we're marching along, we're getting it all done. But I think that, you know, we, I, I was remiss in, in not showing the pictures and not, not doing those things. And when I, I, I sent a bunch to, I had them on my phone. I sent a bunch to Maureen. I'm like, "Maureen, look, I got this, I got this, I got this." And, and so, you know, I think maybe, um, I just assume that everyone knows what we're, what we're doing and that, that, that we're doing the best we can and, um, and haven't really advertised what we've done. And so, you know, I can communicate that better and I know Kate will be happy to put some things together for me.
Yeah, I think that'd be great. Thanks.
Yep, no problem.
And again, this is just Liz thinking out loud, so feel free to disregard what I'm about to say. But maybe it makes sense to have, um, an area on the AMSA website dedicated to what is going on with, you know, returns to school plans and for next year as we know it. And just so that it's one-stop shopping where you can just go straight there as opposed to digging through, um, whether it's, you know, mi, meeting minutes from the board meetings or, or anything like that. Because I ran into the same situation, Ellen, um, where a parent reached out and asked, and I was talking about the HVAC issues, and I know no one wants to hear about it, but they weren't even like aware of it. So if you're not attending these meetings, and again, to your point, I feel like I'm so ingrained, like, I don't even know where I hear, like, whether it's ed committee meetings or board meetings or just discussions with you. I just don't even know where I hear anything anymore that, you know, I was just a little surprised that, I'm like, really? Because I feel like that's been, like, talked about to death. So I was a little surprised when the, the parent mentioned to me that she was unaware of it, so.
It, it's, it's very interesting. So Mike Finkel actually and I had a conversation earlier this week, and he and Mike Narake have already talked about doing like a film series, right? Get, get a video together. Let's walk around, show everybody what we're doing. And, and, um, so people feel more comfortable. They don't think that we're, we're not, we're not getting it done. Because we, we definitely, we're getting it done. And Eric has just, we should probably interview Eric on all the work that he and Sean have put into the HVAC system. I, I mean, it's just, it's, it's amazing. And, and he and I are communicating about it all the time. So I know Mr. Finkel's on the call, so, um, you know, we'll add that on, um, as something too. Mr. Finkel, you can, you can, um, uh, do a little interview with, with Eric and Sean.
I just wanna real quick add on what Jill and, and Sheila both said. The, that role, Sheila, that we play between sort of parents and boards. I want to remind parents to, to reach out, whether it's email or, or whatever it is. There is a very fine line. I think that a lot of the stress and a lot of the pressure the kids are feeling, A, a lot of the kids may not have felt this way before. Um, and I don't think a lot of the parents have sort of been under this kind of pressure before. And there is, I feel, and it's probably the parent in me as well as the board member, that feels there is some level of responsibility for us to have the conversations. And I think a big piece that's missing is that the teachers don't get to see the students in person. So they don't sense some of the stress and the pressure that these kids are feeling. Um, and, and that is, that's hard. Because it's hard for them to realize where the kid's stress level and anxiety level is. And I think that, you know, we're seeing it as parents, but the teachers who normally would see it and catch it and be able to kind of, I don't know what the word I'm looking for is, but kind of run, run, go-between with some of the services that the schools have and other resources is, is missing. And so it's hard. I know that my email is kind of ticking up tonight after, after the meeting. Um, but I just want to really encourage people to, yes, you know, we don't get to choose as a board what happens, but I do think it's important for us to really keep bringing these conversations up and having a hard discussion. It, it's not easy. But I think our kids are having a really, really hard time. And they may be pulling, you know, their As and Bs and, and doing the things, but it doesn't mean that it's easy. It doesn't mean that it's not having a big impact on them as well.
Um, if, if I can address that more, and I think you've raised some really good points. And I, I, I do think that is fair, um, that teachers, first of all, a lot of teachers are parents as well. So we have our students maybe not at AMSA but at other schools, and we are seeing, uh, the effects that this is having on kids. Um, so I think that's part of it. There is definitely a disconnect. I mean, I think that's one of the things that's frustrating about online, um, at edu, it, from an educator's perspective, is that you sort of don't have these, as many opportunities to build relationships. It's so much harder, you know, the little minutes between classes and all of the little moments that happen in, in a school. And that helps us connect with kids and those are missing. But I do think that teachers are aware of how difficult this is. We have a lot of, um, messages coming, you know, there's feedback from kids from surveys that gets passed on to us. We have a lot of emails and, um, messages about, um, about these issues and about, um, respecting students' screen time and homework policies. And it's, it's a very difficult balance that, that is, everybody is trying to figure out. It's harder for us to teach. We're feeling mental stress and, and, um, strain as well. Um, and it's, you know, this is just a, a difficult world situation. And I know everyone knows that. I'm stating the obvious. Um, but, um, teachers are genuinely trying their best to be in touch with what students are dealing with. Um, and, um, and if we're not doing as good a job as we, as we need to be, then, like, personally, that hurts me. So I apologize. Um, I, I really am trying to be, to be aware of that. And I certainly don't feel like it's something that, that the staff of AMSA, the faculty specifically, the staff in general are sort of blasé about or are unaware of.
I think, um, just as a, I think Jill raised a very interesting question. I think it is a big challenge for all of us. This is, in my opinion, mostly an administrative matter for Ellen. And our, and our job as the board is to support Ellen in making it happen, mostly from a financial perspective. I think we do have the, we have some tools in place where we can help influence it. We have the surveys that are done. That's a, a detector of, of problems. We have the open speak, which probably started this whole conversation. But I think we do run the risk that, for the most part, this is an administrative challenge to solve, and our, our role is to help support Ellen mostly financially. And so I, I don't, I don't have a good answer in, in regards to what Jill had asked about, well, what does, what's the board's role here?
Is there something that Ellen can offer us in, in terms of, I'm sorry to put you on the spot, of what we can, um, what, what you would like the board to do? What can the board do to support you better? Is there something that we can do to help you with this issue?
Well, this has been the most challenging issue of, of a lifetime, right? You're, you're trying to balance 1,000 children, all of their families. When I think about our community, I always think of, we at least ripple out and, and affect 3,000 people with a decision that we make. Because each one of those 966 kids has one to four parents. And then let's add their siblings in and their grandparents. And so every decision we, we make affects each and every one of them, including our 130 staff members. And so when we're making these decisions, we are trying to think of it from all sides of things. And I just want to remind folks that, that my, my roots and my, my heart and soul is as a school counselor. I never, ever forget the emotional health of our kids. And yet, our mission is to educate them. It's academics. And I feel we owe them. It's our responsibility to educate them. They're in your home right now, and we will give you the supports that you need to make sure that they're mentally and emotionally healthy. And I encourage families to, to set up playdates, um, in safe ways, at, at parks with masks. And that the families help us by... the families help us by, by doing those things that I know so many of you are doing each day at home. Our mission is to educate the kids. And I think that we've done an outstanding job of that so far. Um, we're, we're almost through this year. We're all feeling a little desperate. Um, our board has been very supportive of, of us so far and I, I really, really appreciate it. Balancing being a board member and being a parent is excruciating because it's very, very difficult to separate those, those two roles because our whole hearts and souls are into all of it. And, um, but we're so close to the finish line here. We are so close. I think we need to continue to educate the kids because that's what schools are about. Now the schools have become everything in a community. And I think this coronavirus has made us realize just how big a school is the center of a community, right? We take care of the social aspects of a child's life for the most part, sports, clubs, um, friendships. It, we, we've, and we monitor their social and their, their emotional health. We feed them. Um, sometimes we clothe them. And now we, all of that has been kind of stripped away and not because we wanted it to be, but because we're kind of isolated, whether people are in school part-time or full-time or not at all. I go back to our mission and I go back to the fact that as a school, before schools became the center of, of our lives, honestly, is to educate the kids because they need to have these skills to be ready to go on and become adults, to go on to the next grade, to go to college, to get careers, to do all of those things. And so we've taken that very seriously, our mission of academic excellence. Um, and maybe we've done that a little bit to the exclusion of some of the other things. And we're just counting on the, the folks, the parents to, to have their, their eye on their child as we have taken on the responsibility, um, and really ramped up, um, our program to try to educate them. And so I just, I guess what I would ask is that we all stick together a, a little bit longer, that we wait and see how this program for our ninth and to sixth graders, uh, works out, that we commit. Mike, as I said, Mike and Brianna have been working on this, getting this together. If you know anyone who would like to apply for those supervisor positions, please let us know. You can apply on school spring for anyone who's listening. Uh, we need, we need to hire more. We have three right now. We need to hire more. And so I just would ask that, that step by step, day by day, uh, when I talk to the staff, we had a staff meeting this week. It was a very difficult week because of the shocking news that no one was expecting that came from, came from our commissioner. And when I feel rocky and shaky and I'm not sure where to go, I just think to myself, keep it steady, steady as she goes, steady as she goes. It's the ship. And when all of you brought Anders and I into these positions four years ago, the ship, it was that, we talked a lot about the ship and the ship was on its side and, and we were told to right the ship, to get it back up again so it could stop moving forward. And we, we got the ship back up and the ship is rocking right now. This is a difficult time in, in our world history. And so I just keep telling myself, Ellen, steady, 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 and guide the ship and guide my school. And so I just would ask for your patience. Give us a little time to continue to work this out. We are making progress. We are making progress.
Thank you, Ellen. And thank you everyone for this conversation. All right. I think we are ready to move on.
Roger, just, just going to say this out loud for those that are not, uh, in Zoom but are following on Facebook. Uh, Mike Finkel posted a link. There's a back-to-school guide on the website, uh, that parents can check. And we're going to continue to add videos and plans for that, on that link. Um, so I don't know if anybody else on Facebook, I think Liz, you're checking the Facebook feed. Can, can you copy that link over so everybody can see it?
Yes, I will do that, Raul.
Thanks.
Thank you. Um, so on to meeting effectiveness. Actually, sorry, uh, meeting wrap-up. Um, I think given the, um, strategic planning meeting, we can skip, I think we should just skip over the SMART goals. I think we can come back to them after we do our strategic planning. Um, discussion of meeting effectiveness, sort of a prelude for, uh, Saturday in some ways.
We're at least eight minutes ahead. It's good.
You know, I don't know if we've said this in a while, but as I was thinking about, you know, what, what happens when we all go back in person? I, I actually like the online meetings. I think they're very effective. I don't know if anybody thinks that way. I like being able to see everyone on the screen. And I think that we have an opportunity to have more parents attend. So just throwing that out there.
That's all up to the state because the state determines about the open meeting laws and how the, the meetings run. So if the state goes back and says, we have to have in-person meetings again, we have to follow, um, that, that OML reg. But this was like a pandemic thing that they are allowing. I love it. I agree with you, Kristin. I, I think it's awesome. Um, I don't, I don't know how long they'll let us keep it though.
But it doesn't mean we can't stream it anyways and we can't have these, you know what I mean? Like the same way we're doing before. I mean, I, whether we're in person or, or not. And I, I think, yeah, well, there'll definitely be just like the rest of the world, right? Are, are they going to put everyone back to their offices and stuff like that? There's a whole bunch of things to be figured out once we can do, have those conversations. So.
Yeah, I think we, I think we've learned a lot and become much more effective. We will obviously be able to continue the remote participation and Facebook Live for, uh, the audience, for the non-board members. I think as Ellen said, we'll have to wait for state guidance in regards to how much for board, for, for trustees as to whether we'll need to be in person or remote. Time will tell. We'll wait the state's guidance. Uh, okay. I think we're good there. Um, candidate items for next month. Beyond, beyond the usual. So we.
Roger, you said that you, um, to, uh, add the diversity conversation to next, next meeting.
Yes. So put that under Chair Business, uh, diversity, community, diversity discussion continues. Other, other items for next month? All right. With that, I think we are ready for closing items.
You had, um, you had three action items?
Oh, I, I was, um, so the action items were around, uh, SMART, SMART goals and I'm deferring on those for the.
No, I was referring to three things. They were just small items, but, um, adding the district report card to the minutes.
Oh, okay. Those.
Um, then demonstrate, uh, more like with the film series, um, demonstrating more of what we're doing. And also I didn't get the whole thing at the last one. Liz was going to send, what link was that?
Oh, no, sorry. I didn't need to be a nationality on those. I was just making a comment that Mr. Finkel shared a link to the website on Zoom. And as I understand, the parents don't see that because we're sharing this on Facebook, not Zoom. So I asked Liz to put it on Facebook.
Yeah, I just posted it in the Facebook Live. So.
Already, already done.
Already done. We don't need to, we, we don't need to record us.
All right. Any other business before we go to a motion for executive session? Hearing none, I'd like to make a motion to go to executive session for, to discuss the purchase or lease of facilities and not reconvene as discussion in open session would be detrimental to our position. Can I have a second, please?
Who are we inviting?
Second from Nick. Uh, Sarah, roll call vote. Oh, sorry. You would, uh, we will be inviting Ellen, uh, Mike.
Lisa.
Lisa McConner, um, Bob Baldwin.
And Leanna.
And Leanna.
Hold on, hold on. I gotta get this for a vote.
Did you get the invitees? Sarah?
Yes, I did. All right. So Roger, you were the one who made the motion.
Roger slash Nick.
Yep, and Nick. Okay.
And we will, uh, start, uh, aim to start executive session at 8:35.
Okay, let me do the roll call. Uh, Ben?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Kristin?
Yes.
Liz? Liz?
She said yes, I saw her move.
Kay, Maureen?
Yeah, sorry. That was a yes.
Maureen, Nick?
Yes.
Raul?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Sheila?
Yes.
Salmeen?
Yes.
All right. All done.
All right.
Thank you. See you in 10 minutes. Thank you, Sarah.
I'll see you in 10 minutes on the other link.